This conference will now be recorded.
I'll call the city council meeting for April 5th to order. Clerk Thompson, could we have roll call?
Mayor Kelvin, Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Yeah.
O'Brien. Osk.
Here.
Davis. Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank you all for being here tonight. I'm going to change the order here just a little bit. This is for the Kelvin family. It is with heavy hearts that we give our condolences and prayers to Mayor Kelvin, his wife Jenna, and to their entire family in the death of their son, Robert, who died last week after a two-year battle with cancer. We are so sorry for your loss. Take your time and do what is best for you and your family in this time of mourning and return to your city duties when you think the time is right. And with that, I'm going to call on the council member and pastor, Justin Osk, for a community prayer.
Let's pray. God, we give you thanks for the many ways that you create, sustain, and nurture life. On this day after Easter, we know that even after death, you are at work to bring life, and that life always wins. We give you thanks for your gift of Rob Kelvin and the many ways that he brought joy to your world. We ask that you would be with Mayor Kelvin and his family as they grieve his death, be with Rob's wife and children as they grieve, and be with our community as we grieve, and support our mayor. Amen.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Mr. Butterfield?
I would just like to bring up two things on the city sales tax, or two small little issues.
Okay, do you want that under?
It can go with.
Number 12?
That's fine.
Is that fine?
Yeah, that would probably be the right place, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Grammets, is that okay?
I didn't clearly hear what he was proposing. Could you repeat what he said?
I just have two small little items to bring up regarding the city sales tax.
Yep, that would be appropriate time to place them. Yep.
All right. Anything else? All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda as proposed. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
All right, consent items. Clerk Thompson?
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval the city council minutes of March 15th, the special city council minutes of March 15th, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of March 22nd, planning commission minutes of March 17th, the accounts payable report of March 11th through March 31st, temporary on-sale liquor license for Wilmer Fraternal Order of Eagles, application for the Economic Development Commission Operations Board of Abdullah Awal, the Public Works Safety Committee minutes of March 18th, approved plans and specifications and advertisement for bids for Robins Island Phase Two improvements, approve and authorize signatures for Wilmer Municipal Utilities District Heating memorandum of an, or, yeah, memorandum. The Finance Committee minutes of March 18th, approve the investment policy, preserve on 24th minor subdivision approval with conditions as stated, council's acceptance, the Convention of Visitors Bureau minutes of February 16th, Human Rights Commission minutes of January 16th, January 26th, Police Commission minutes of February 1st, and for council's information, the Main Street minutes of March 23rd.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items.
All right.
Second.
Second, we got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Andrew?
Can we pull item H1, please?
Which one?
H1, approve plans and specs for advertisement for bids for Robins Island Phase Two improvements.
Okay. So we have a motion except for H2. Can we have roll call?
H1.
H1, okay. Can we have roll call?
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
All right, councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. In front of us, we have a recommendation to adopt a resolution approving the plans and specifications and authorizing the advertisement forbid, forbidding for the Invest in Wilmer Robins Island Project Phase Two. With us, we have Rachel Skrepvett, which is chair of that appropriate board, as well as Mr. Jared Bogey with Bolton and Mink, who also helped with design and specifications on the plan. And the intent here is just so that the entire council can see the contents of this plan before we actually move it forward. So at this time, I think it would be best to turn it over to Ms. Skrepvett.
All right. Here, I was looking for you out in the audience, but you're here on the screen here. So welcome, Rachel.
Thank you so much. Tonight, we are going to present to you our final phase of Robins Island. As you know, we've been meeting as a committee for the last two years, and last year was Phase One, which was the roads and parking lots out at Robins Island. We were thankful that that project came in under bid, and now we will finish off, our hope is to finish off, the second phase this summer. So our proposal tonight is to show you specs for bids for shelters out at Robins Island, along with some landscaping and lighting that Jared with Bolton and Mink will be presenting to you. If there's any questions for myself or Jared after the presentation is done, please feel free to ask us. Jared?
There he is. Welcome, Jared.
Sorry about that. I was muted. So, can everybody see the screen with the presentation?
We can.
All right, awesome, thank you. Well, appreciate the opportunity to present the council with the update of the Robins Island Shelter and Lighting Improvements Project. As Rachel mentioned, the committee's been working diligently on Phase Two, so we'll jump right into that. So basically, as you can see, this is a site plan of the overall island itself with Business 71 on the south end here, and then this is actually the access road that was constructed last year with the new turnaround. The items, the circles in green, I'm not sure how well they're showing up for you, but the circles in green are actually proposed trees as part of the planning process. When the subcommittee was going through it, we learned that Public Works does, in fact, order trees on an annual basis, and in an effort to reduce costs associated with the project, rather than having a contractor order them and install them, Public Works Department can incorporate those trees into their annual tree order at a cost reduced from what we could acquire a contractor and pay them to install them for. So those are actually proposed to go in, but they won't necessarily be part of the contract that is actually let for these improvements. The lights, actually the yellow circles here are the lights that are proposed within the improvement, Phase Two. You'll notice they extend along the main access road up to the turnaround. Those are your typical lights that you would see in a parking lot situation, the taller overhead Cobra-type fixtures. You'll also notice that there are some lights shown along the walking path, and actually those are proposed to be bollard lights, which would provide lighting to the path, also accommodate additional electrical receptacles for Celebrate the Light event, and these bollards here, and then they're actually subsequently, there's a set that finishes the loop around the trail. Those are set up as alternates in the project, so pending how the bids come in, they could be either move forward with them or remove them from the project. Just by way of everybody's reference, as far as the shelters go, or their names, this is open shelter number one on the south. Here's Gurry Shelter, the Hilltop Shelter, and then open shelter number two. This is an older area photo. The playground is right in this area, just so everybody is aware of where we're looking. Open Shelter number one, you'll notice, is turned to the northwest rather than its existing orientation that is more north and south. And ultimately, the reason for this is the patio area on open number one is out in front, and the committee recommended that that shelter be adjusted slightly so that there is a view of the beach and the lake rather than straight ahead into a parking lot. So wanted to point that out for the group, and we can look at those shelter designs here a little further. Shelter number one, as you can see, is a 20 feet in width by 40 foot long. This is actually an enclosed structure here, and then we do have a larger overhang referenced by this dash line. That's actually the roof line of the shelter, and it accommodates additional picnic tables out in front. One other thing to note is we have identified a service counter based on the input from the group. This will be a counter on both sides with a coil door or a roll-up door, which will provide the opportunity for serving potentially food or whatever the individuals that rented for want to utilize that counter space for. You'll also notice on the south side, there is a garage door planned, and that is to accommodate any type of off-season storage that might be necessary within this building. There's also man doors on the southeast corner and the northeast corner to provide access into the structure. And then finally, an additional service counter off of the east side. The discussion there was, although nothing has been approved or decided, there have been some discussions about potential aquatic rentals, things of that nature at the island, and this would serve as an opportunity for that should those types of rentals be made available in the future. The next shelter is open shelter number two. You'll notice the rendering down in the left-hand corner here. This is a prefabricated structure that would be installed at the site. Just by way of reference, this would be the east side of the shelter. The existing retaining wall out at the park actually sits along this side. You'll notice that we've identified a 12-foot countertop. That's simply, again, if food was proposed to be served or things of that nature, the people renting it could certainly utilize that. You'll also notice that we have these L-shaped benches here. Those are actually benches. The committee discussed the potential of creating additional seating area. If somebody didn't necessarily want to be sitting at one of the picnic tables inside of the, under the roof, this would be another opportunity for additional seating. Based on subsequent reviews, I will note, though, that the legs, if you will, these L's here and here have been removed from the design just to better accommodate access into the shelter for Public Works staff and moving picnic tables around. So that is the proposed floor plan of shelter number two. Hilltop Shelter, again, 40 by 20 structure. You'll notice that it does have a double door here on which would be the south side of the building, so Hilltop also will be rotated slightly to accommodate a better view of the lake through the large windows on both the south on these sides here. The electrical room is also proposed, and Hilltop is actually one of those shelters that is utilized frequently or heavily during the Celebrate the Light event, and this electrical room will accommodate some of the connections or access to the electrical panel that's needed to help an event run efficiently. The one thing, as part of the construction drawings, this electrical room, rather than being oriented in this fashion, was actually adjusted to be oriented this way for ease of access and things like that for the event. It actually helps out the interior layout as well, so. Gurry Shelter, currently, just by way of everybody's reference, there's currently a double door on the south side. That door is being removed completely, and the double door would be replaced on the north side of the structure facing the playground. An additional door will be installed here in approximately the same location as the existing door, and that's based on fire code. You'll notice that there is also an electrical room in this location. It's similar to where it is currently. However, the storage that's generally in this area is being relocated to the west side of the electrical room. A couple other things I did want to point out about the shelter. This also is a countertop that will provide an opportunity for people to set things, serve things, whatever they need to utilize that for. You'll notice all the windows around the shelter, and then this wall space here is being reserved for the Gurry artwork that exists in the current building. This is a rendering of the proposed materials. Couple things that I did want to point out here. First, you'll notice this L-type bench. That's the benches that we talked about at open shelter number two. You'll notice that the exterior roof material siding and burnished block is very similar to the Three Seasons, or to the new shelter out at the park, rather. One thing I did want to mention also is that the roofing material is being proposed as an alternate. So what, the base bid would include the roofing material to match the existing shelter. However, we're providing an option for pricing relative to asphalt shingles so that that can be evaluated, depending how the bids come in. And then similarly, for the burnished block around the bottoms, that is an alternate also where siding, if the cost came in too high, the block would be removed and the siding simply extended down to, down to the ground level. Project schedule? We're here at the council presentation. Public bidding will occur this month, pending council authorization to proceed with that. And we would look at awarding the contract potentially at the May 3 meeting, pending how everything works through the processes, or ultimately the second meeting in May, which would allow construction to start late May, early June of this year. And so with that, that concludes our presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have this evening.
All right, thank you, Jared. Is there any questions from the council? I just have one. The Gurry Anderson, that's going to be heated, right? Insulated and heated?
Gurry, none of the shelters proposed within the project will be heated. They will, however, be insulated so that you can probably extend the use of them a little on the, into the spring and later into the fall, but there are no plans for heat currently in any of the shelters.
Okay, because I thought Gurry Anderson already has electric baseboard heat, and I thought the plan was going to be use that as a warming house for skating, so we didn't have to use the new shelter with people going in with skates to scrape up the floor if you didn't have mats down, so. Rob, do you have any opinion on that?
Mayor Protem, members of the council, I don't recall that at all being part of the plan. I know with the Four Seasons Shelter, there was a plan for that to have a warming house. I think some of the goal would be for open shelter number one to become that in the future with where the proposed ice skating loop or rink would be. Gurry, I think, would be a little bit too far for people to walk across the road and be able to skate.
Okay.
With Gurry, there used to be a gas furnace in there, but the Public Works has taken that out since we don't rent that in the wintertime anymore.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Andrew?
Well, with that, and we can continue discussion if warranted, but I guess we received the information that we needed, so in light of that, I would enter a motion adopting a resolution approving the plans and specs, authorizing advertisements for bids for the Invest in Wilmer Robins Island Project Phase Two.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, can we have roll call?
Councilmember Butterfield.
Councilperson.
Sorry.
Rachel.
No, Councilperson O'Brien. Yep, Councilperson O'Brien is raising his hand on the screen.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I don't see you. Go ahead, Mike. There you are.
Yeah, the question I have is, I haven't heard any talk about security or cameras. Will there be any security in this area or cameras in this area?
Councilmember Plowman, or?
I would defer to either Ms. Skrepvett or Mr. Baumgartner.
There is going to be wiring.
Rob, you want to take that?
Yep, there's going to be wiring for the shelters to put additional cameras in at a future date.
Okay. Does that suffice, Councilmember O'Brien?
It does.
Okay. I know I had discussion, I don't know, last year with someone at a firm that sells those units or rents them out, and I think we can get a deal from somebody, so. That's a few months down the road then, once it's completed. Is that right, Rob?
Can you repeat the question?
I talked with a firm that sells security systems and leases them, and they said that we could get a good deal from them when we need them.
Yeah, I think it would be a huge addition to the complex to have some security cameras out there. We have them right now for the playground, but to have them around the shelters for security reasons would be a good idea for the future.
All right. Any other questions? Audrey?
I think the security cameras are just as important on the roadways and the trails, so will we be able to add those to the lighting that's out there also?
I would defer that to Jared about how the power would be able to go up the pole.
Jared, did you hear that?
Yes, I did, thank you. No, we'll definitely take a closer look at that, but there is, ultimately, the wiring, there will be a good circuit out there between the poles. There's some additional access, as I mentioned earlier, for electrical out there with plug-ins and that nature, but we'll definitely double-check just to make sure that those systems would be accommodated by that power. I'm confident they are, but it does not hurt to double-check, so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Roll call now, Clerk Thompson.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
All right, that's approved. Next on the agenda is the public hearing for issuance of healthcare revenue bonds, Series And I'll open the public hearing. Finance Director Okens.
Mr. Mayor Protem, if you could also announce the call-in number, if there are citizens that are watching that would want to call in with questions or comments.
All right, if anyone would like to call in, the number is, and you have to have the area code, 320-335-7135. So it's 320-335-7135. Mr. Okens.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Fagerly, we're here tonight to inform the public and the council on the possibility of issuing conduit financing revenue bonds to refund bonds that were outstanding for Rice Hospital. We began this discussion, the city began this discussion with Caris Health at the beginning of last year. As the interest rate market was declining, they have been evaluating it last year. They approached the city in January of this year, indicating that they were interested in refinancing the outstanding debt. The present outstanding debt actually is a city of Wilmer debt. It is included in a lease that was entered into in 2017 with Caris Health. Their base rent payments are actually what the debt service payments are for two bond issues that the city had outstanding. The first bond issue was issued in 2012. It was for the renovation and improvement of Rice Hospital. The second debt was done in 2013 at 9.1 million, and that was for the Rice Care Center improvements. As of today, there is $32.5 million remaining of that $50 million debt. There are reserve accounts that are in place. The bond covenants call for those reserve accounts to go towards the retirement or reduction of any conduit debt that's financing. There is some debt service accounts, which is the base rent that Caris Health has been paying the city monthly. That actually is allowed under the lease to go back to Caris Health for payments of debt as well. We have with us tonight Jenny Bolton from Kennedy and Graven. We also have Tammy Kuzman from Centra Care. I will ask Jenny after I'm done to explain the process that we used to get to the point where we are tonight. Tammy from Centra Care is also with us in case there are some questions of Centra Care as well. The public hearing tonight, again, is to take public testimony, answer any questions that the council may have. What's being proposed is a resolution authorizing the issuance of conduit revenue bonds. Those bonds would be the entire obligation of Centra Care. The debt, as far as the city would be concerned, would be removed and paid for from that conduit financing and the use of those reserves. With that, Mayor Protem, Fagerly, I'll ask Jenny Bolton from Kennedy and Graven to somewhat explain the process that we went through. Jenny and Kennedy and Graven is the city's bond legal counsel, who was involved in the initial lease and documents that were drafted when Caris Health and the city of Wilmer entered into the lease in 2017.
All right, welcome, Ms. Bolton.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about this financing. This, as Mr. Okens explained, is a conduit revenue bond financing. In order to issue this type of financing, the city... In order to um issue this type of financing, uh, the city is required to hold a public hearing, uh, which is scheduled for tonight, and um adopt a resolution authorizing the financing. Uh, that also approves the redemption of the prior bond, and uh in this case, because the existing lease included payments from Caris to the city to cover the uh principal and interest on the 2012 and 2013 bonds, um, there is an amendment to the lease that will be approved as part of this uh resolution as well, that removes those provisions related to the payment of those principal and interest payments since uh they will have been paid off. Uh, so after public hearing, the council will consider a resolution approving all of those items. In the meantime, the borrower has been working with its lender to prepare uh the documents that relate to this. The city is a party to those documents, uh, some of the documents, but they are all assigned over to a bond trustee, so the city is no longer involved in making any payments of principal or interest on the new. And as Mr. Okens explained, this will no longer be um an indebtedness of the city's uh the the city's tax base will no longer be pledged as was on the 2012 funds, and uh, you know, the cities, there will be no property of the city that is uh pledged as collateral. Uh, this will be entirely under the umbrella of the um Centra Care uh financing group. Um, all of their credit stands behind the payment of the debt service. So after this point, um, there is uh one additional approval from the state of Minnesota. Uh, it is simply a filing of an application and um a fairly quick process, and um and then execution of documents, and and at that point, uh, the the parties will be ready to close on the financing, which is scheduled for uh April fifteenth. Uh, and if you have any additional questions, I would be happy to answer.
All right. Any questions so far from the council? So the total amount will not exceed thirty-five million, but we don't know the final number with the closing costs yet? Mr. Okens, are you going to answer that?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. Um, the uh sources and uses of funds are uh set at this point. Um, the par amount of the conduit debt would be, and I'm going to round these numbers rather than going out so many decimal points here, so it's roughly twenty-eight point nine million dollars for the conduit financing. Uh, three million dollars is the reserve from the 2012A issue that will apply towards the use of funds. Uh, there's seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of the 2013 reserve, and then the unused debt service is roughly one point five million dollars, for a total of thirty-four point two million dollars for the sources of funds. The use of those uses of those funds are the refunding escrow deposit, which includes the par amount, the uh two reserve accounts. There's a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in the cost of issuance that is covered by those previous sources. Uh, the one point five million dollars will be returned to Caris Health, and there's roughly a little over two thousand dollars for additional proceeds that balance that to the thirty-four point two million dollars.
All right, thank you. So David Hillenbrand, is there any uh calls that have come in? Or is it Ross?
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, at this time, we do not have any uh calls at this time.
No calls yet. Okay, that number again is three two oh, three three five, seven one three five. Any questions from any council members?
We have to close the public hearing.
I know that, but it's a little different here.
No, I don't.
For the last year, it's been different, so. Any questions? Nope. Any calls yet, David?
None at this time.
All right, with that, I'm going to close the hearing, bring it to the council table. What would the council like to do?
I can enter a motion, and I'm, do we need two different motions? Just one? So, okay, a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of the conduit revenue um refunding bonds, and we must also do the amendment to the operating lease?
Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Nelson, that is, that will take effect with the resolution authorizing the issuance.
Okay. All right, I will enter that resolution as stated.
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second, further questions? So the question is, issuance of healthcare revenue bonds, Series 2021A, for thirty-four million, two hundred thousand. You have roll call, Ms. Thompson?
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
All right, that carries. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I I just wanted to comment that um this has been a complicated transaction, and um I just want to thank everyone for working on it. This is something that's good for our community, it's good for the city, and it's good for Caris Health um in our hospital, and so I just want to thank everyone for the hard work because it's an unusual transaction, and um I think we got it done, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton, and Ms. Kuzman, and Finance Director Okens. All right, number nine. We're going to set a public hearing for amending ordinance 1060 zoning section two B and six point one related to multifamily housing in the general business district. Ms. Swedberg, welcome. You're taking it?
Thank you, I am.
All right.
Bit of a mouthful. Um, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, we have a introduction for an ordinance to set a public hearing um to amend our zoning ordinance. This came about because of a project, a multifamily housing project we're currently working on, um, but it spurred the conversation at Planning Commission to start to use tools in our toolbox, um, as we've used this phrase quite a bit, to con- continue to uh work towards some of the housing needs that we have in Wilmer and in our region. We know this is a nationwide um shortage, we keep hearing about it, and it's not going away anytime soon, and I have a feeling. Um, so on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, Planning Commission held a public hearing and approved this amendment um to allow multifamily housing in a general business zone uh via conditional use permit. In Wilmer, conditional use permits for those members on the council who aren't aware um are fully approved by the Planning Commission. Council does have the authority to override those, um, but they, but it's not an item that comes to you um for review. We kind of keep that land use item separate um from the council. Staff discussed with the commission that this is a pretty major text amendment um to our existing ordinance, though it's small in size. Um, it really allows us to be more flexible um and continue to be in line with kind of the general trend of housing um and the housing market. Um, they also found that it was in line with the comprehensive plan, which is always important with these kind of amendments. In your packet, you will find some data that we included from the West Central Association of Realtors, um, and this just shows since 2006 kind of where we've been at as a city um of our inventory of housing. Aaron Beckman with the EDC will often say we're shooting for like maybe a five or six month inventory, um, and as of February 2021, we were at about a one point eight month supply, um, which is far below where we want to be, so um just this continued conversation that this trend really, if you look at the graph, has been declining uh since about 2008, uh, and we need to continue to just be flexible and allow for these sort of um projects to continue to come to Wilmer. Um, right now, in the general business district, we do allow multifamily housing as a secondary use, uh, which means that there has to be some sort of commercial use on the first floor. With both the changes in retail, um, and just the general kind of trend of of multifamily housing, um, those, these developments really look for kind of what we call like a second tier commercial area, so they're not paying the the land prices that you might see of a commercial zone on First Street or Highway twelve, um, but they still have visibility, they're still close in proximity to other services, whether it's groceries or uh maybe a workplace or something like that, um, it allows for that proximity. And again, just that that visibility, so people know um what some of their housing options might be. So, uh, with that, it would be staff recommendation to adopt a resolution to set this public hearing uh for April nineteenth, uh, 2021 city council meeting for the amendment.
All right, thank you very much. So we need a motion to set a public hearing for April nineteenth. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second to set the public hearing for April nineteenth, seven oh one for ordinance 1060 zoning section two point B and six point I. Further questions? All those in favor, or Thompson, Clerk Thompson, roll call?
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
All right, that carries. Number ten, this is you again, Sarah. Consideration of Wilmer Arts Recovery Grant from Wilmer Area Community Foundation for Main Street.
Putting on my other hat for the day. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, um, we, the Wilmer Main Street has received um a donation or a grant um from the Wilmer Area Community Foundation in the amount of four thousand dollars uh towards some of the art, public art projects and programs uh we've been running over the past several years. Uh, for council members that aren't aware, Wilmer Main Street was awarded a thirty thousand dollar grant from Minnesota Main Street um to develop kind of a local artist program where we directly um, we directly fund local creative people uh to help us in downtown. The whole premise of this work, um, and the kind of goal of our local program specifically has been to create more visible, frequent, everyday gathering spaces that are conducive to and celebrate a variety of ages, cultures, and backgrounds in downtown Wilmer. Um, of course, with COVID, uh, and the craziness that this last year has brought us all, uh, gathering spaces are a little bit tricky, um, but we still want to continue to create purpose for people to be downtown, whether they're, uh, you know, walking on the sidewalk, grabbing some takeout, um, or going to work, whatever it might be. Um, and so over the past three years, um, we have been fortunate to fund twenty-one uh local artists to create twenty-three projects um in the past two years. A few of these projects um are still going to take place in 2021. We we had some flexibility to allow them to kind of pivot a little bit, um, and and do a project in this year instead of last, um, but this additional funding from Wilmer, uh, from the Wilmer Area Community Foundation, uh, will allow us to expand just a few more projects, probably about four, um, to join this cohort and have a few more. Our focus will really be to have some sort of connection to downtown still, because that's our main kind of focus and vision and goal, um, but to also accommodate some physical distancing requirements, um, and really just focus on creating purpose for people right now to connect uh with one another in the community. So, um, it would be staff recommendation to adopt a resolution authorizing staff to accept the four thousand dollars awarded uh by the 2021 Wilmer Arts Recovery Grant.
So move.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second uh to approve the four thousand dollar uh grant. Further discussion? Clerk Thompson, roll call?
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
So Sarah, will a letter of thank you go from the city and Main Street, or just Main Street, or?
It'll come from both of us, of course.
Okay, thank you. Number eleven, this is you again. Consideration of application for 2021 ARP Community Challenge Grant for bike racks.
Yes, last one from me, I think. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, uh, the last item before you from my desk at least, um, is an AARP Community Challenge Grant for some bike racks with Wilmer Bike. I had some of the Wilmer Bike, um, members approach me because of our artists on Main Street work and work with local artists, um, wanting to apply for this grant, um, to create some fun new bike racks that have a little bit of like a local art twist on them, so not only do they serve, will they serve a few parks, um, to have some more bike rack space, uh, but also be just kind of a focal piece, um, and a fun kind of community gathering opportunity, um, that just sparks a little fun, uh, when people are maybe walking by or utilizing those parks. The grants would be for fifteen thousand dollars. Um, the project would be working, again, with the creative community to design three new bike racks uh for placement in three parks. There's a toolkit, that springboard for the arts, um, created and has available for people to utilize, so we're kind of basing our project and our funding off of this work that they've already done. Um, and the three, the three bikes, bike racks, uh, we perceive being at Robbins Island, Swanson Field Park, and Rice Park, um, primarily because we want to co-locate them with other things and other opportunities that are bringing people to those parks. Um, and so with the splash pad and the um Destination Playground and and the baseball fields and different things, we think that those would be three kind of already trafficked parks um for for these bike racks to be. Um, so this resolution would be to adopt a resolution authorizing staff uh to apply for and accept if awarded, uh, this 2021 AARP Community Challenge Grant.
All right, so there's no guarantee yet that we would get it?
Correct, and.
Do we have to match anything then?
No, there is no matching funds required for this grant, um, and we talked a little bit internally, I think if if we're not awarded, um, we probably just won't move forward with this project at this time.
All right. Questions from the council?
I'd think a resolution to authorize staff to apply for and accept if awarded 2021 AARP Community Challenge Grant.
Second.
Pastor Osk?
All right.
We have a motion and second, further questions?
Just a comment, I just want to say thank you to the staff and Wilmer Bikes for looking for these opportunities. This, we do need bike racks, and so this is a great way, if we are awarded the grant, of accomplishing a couple of things um with that, and so I just wanted to say thank you for doing it.
All right. Mr. Butterfield?
Is this going to tie into the the bike rental we have out there now, or is this all going to be in different locations than where those bikes you can rent out?
Should be some of the same locations, right, Sarah?
Yeah, there might be some same locations, but these bike racks would really be focused on community members maybe biking their own personal bike to the park and looking for a place to lock it up while they're um utilizing those facilities, so they wouldn't have rental bikes at them, they would just be available for um community members to use.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? Roll call, Ms. Thompson?
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien. Osk.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
All right, passes. Number twelve. Invest in Wilmer Local Option Sales Tax Presentation, Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, let me get this loaded up here.
So do you have some guests here tonight, too?
We do have some guests here as well, um, from the Invest in Wilmer Group, um, from the Swanson Field, the Chair, Mary Swawsky, from Recreation Fields, co-chairs, we've got Tony Omen and John Colnall, from the Event slash Rec Center, Dr. Chinotnis, um, I know Matt Dawson, the Chair of the Invest in Wilmer is online. the Chair of the Invest in Wilmer is online along with Rachel. So basically, this is going to be an overview of the Invest in Wilmer project from when it started to where it is now, because there were some questions about it at the work session on the 29th. So we'll kind of go through this, kind of give a summary of how the projects have started and where they're at currently. So we kind of all understand the promotional flyer that went out for the Invest in Wilmer about why do we want to get, put a sales tax into Wilmer? Basically, we want to improve our infrastructure with passing this half-cent sales tax, and this tax will generate $30 million for the next 13 years, and it will be sunsetted if the dollars amounts isn't reached in the 13 years, which with the circumstance that we're in right now, that's probably not going to happen. Another part of it with the sales tax is that most of the sales tax will be from people from that come to our community will be able to receive those funds. So it's not always going to be a burden onto the Wilmer people to help with us with our projects. So when we actually get into the promotional flyer that was sent out to the public, we'll see that Robins Island that we talked about today, tonight already. This one was a two-phase project, $3 million, and their project consisted of shelter, roads, and parking lots. When we get to the Event Center, that was a $10 million project, and that was to be for pickleball courts and tennis courts, seating for concerts and shows, kitchen, indoor play space, outdoor covered skating rink, locker rooms with meeting space. Recreation Fields was a $6 million project that was supposed to be for baseball and softball fields, two recreation multipurpose fields, concession stands, lights, and a bubble over one of the fields for six months out of the year. Other part of the projects was Stormwater for $7 million, and those are going to be kind of when they need to be done and everything. That's a little bit of a different committee compared to what we have listed with the Invest in Wilmer Group that's here tonight. Swanson Field Regional Park, $2 million, concession stands, restroom, seating for orange, a plaza and playground area, and the Community Center, which is tied with the City Hall, that was supposed to be for $2 million. And so here was the ballot question that was out on November 6th, basically to making sure that everyone understands that the sales tax was going to go for Recreation Athletic Fields, Robins Island Regional Park amenities, Swanson Field Park improvements, Recreation Event Center, and Stormwater improvements. That was what was voted on, and you can see what the scores were there. So it did pass. And then this is the procedures that have went through for the Invest in Wilmer's to go through. I'd like to add, part of this project was that it would have to go through city staff to make sure it's medded through and worked out through either finance and with public works and engineering. And then we had to have a public presentation as well. So every project went through that. If it was a Phase 2, similar to what Robins Island is, that has also went through a public presentation as well. So then it goes to the subcommittees up to the Invest in Wilmer, then Invest in Wilmer to Park and Rec Board for their recommendation, and then it goes to the council for the ultimate approval. So back in August 17th, 2020, the Invest in Wilmer Committee brought up a priority list, and their priorities were Robins Island, Swanson Fields, the Recreation Fields, and the Event/Rec Center in that order. So when we actually get to the Robins Island, similar to what I've said before about what their scope of their project was, and that again, that was a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. Phase 1 was the road, the water main, and the parking lot, and that's supposed to be finished this spring, this summer, and that cost, came into about $1.45 million. Phase 2 is going to be the shelter improvements and lighting and the tree restoration, and that's just going to be presented to you guys tonight. So they have about $1.55 million to go with that project. When we get to Swanson Fields, this is one of the projects that has already been out for bid. This was bid out in the fall of last year. Again, we can see what the scope of the project was, and this was kind of a little bit, maybe if you want to say a twofold. When we first looked at this project, we want, it adds the whole shebang. So we're doing improvements to the softball fields, to the orange Elsie Field, and to the blue. When the project came back with the bids, it was roughly over $400,000 over budget. So the subcommittee had to go back and look at valued engineered options and other things that they can do to get the project back into the budget. So working with Marcus Construction and WSN with the architects, they actually came up with now a base project of just doing the orange field. And that's going to be consisting of drainage, fencing, a grandstand, dugout improvements, concession, and turf for the infield. And an alternate for the blue field, which is a skin field right now, they want to be able to put grass in there and make that into a 90-foot diamond for the kids because we are short on 90-foot diamonds in town. And we're lucky to say that this project is going out for rebidding tomorrow. When we get to the Recreation Fields, again, it's a $6 million project. Well, you understand what the scope of the project was. This project did go out for bid last week. We had our pre-bid meeting last week. The goal was to have four softball and baseball fields that are at the 220 fence mark, and that goes back to the master plan. When we, if you remember, 292 came in to do a master plan, they said that 220 was the max that the fields could get to with that spot of land that we have. So that's where that 220 came from. Concession stand with storage and a restroom facility, two multipurpose fields, and one thing that you'll probably see that the trend of tonight, there's just not enough money to get all the projects done. So one of the alternates for the turf fields are the lights. And when we say the lights on the field, it's going to be for both fields. They're going to have a common set of poles in the middle. So it'll be six poles, I believe. So middle ones will be shared for both fields. When we come to the Events and Recreation Center, the scope of the project was again what we talked about with the pickleball courts, seating for concerts, kitchen kid space, meeting rooms, outdoor covered rink. This project is also out for bid, so it's a 25-foot square area for drive floor events. It can be separated into two different spaces, and that wall is part of an alternate, but the way that the construction manager is saying, that we had to put that in there to make sure that we can get into the budget-wise, but he feels very confident that that wall will be able to be put into the project. There's two meeting rooms, there's a kitchen space. When we talk about kitchen, it's more of a heating kitchen, so caterers can come in. We'll have coolers, freezers at, pre-compartment sink, and a serving area. It's not going to be a commercial kitchen, so we won't be actually cooking or preparing food at that place. Bleachers on both ends of the facility, expanded lobby to what the Civic Center is now, additional storage, an outdoor courtyard space, and then the actual drive floor area can be divided into tennis, pickleball, volleyball, and basketball and pickleball courts. And again, there's an alternate in that project, too. Right when you walk into the Civic Center now, to your right-hand side where the handicap bathroom is at, they're looking at that would be a community room or a boardroom type of business. So if there's a hockey tournament, that's kind of where they would be able to check in right now, because we don't have that type of space at Civic Center. And again, the Community Center is part of the City Hall project and Stormwater. We know the scope of the projects in there, and this project is pretty much kind of separate from what the Investor Committee's features about. So that's, that's kind of just in a nutshell of what this, what these projects have been. It's been a long, interesting journey with all the subcommittees about how many meetings that we've had. They've worked really hard on maximizing the dollars that they've had and the project. It's just, there's a lot of things that were on those lists, and they did the best that they could with trying to fulfill those projects. At this time, you know, we got the chairs here and online to discuss the projects more in depth if you have questions from the subcommittee level.
My question is more of a finance question. Maybe Mr. Okens has this. I'm putting him on the spot. What have we collected up to this point? Because I know, while you're thinking about that, we bonded for $5 million for Robins Island and Swanson projects, correct?
That's correct, Councilmember Osmus. The amount of collections, you did catch me kind of off-guard.
Sorry.
That report will be coming out. We just got a new, as the council is aware, the way the state returns sales tax to the city is we get an estimate, and then they reconcile it. The last three months' estimates and reconciliations are running 7% to 15% higher than what the first, the first three months that we collected the tax. We had about $2.1 million collected in 2020, I believe, if I remember correctly. I don't remember those reports. I believe that was about what it was. But we see a trend of those collections going up as things with the pandemic seem to be opening up a little more. And so we'll be having that report to the Thursday's Finance Committee because we just got a notification today of what the new estimate was.
Okay. So when, when decisions are made about what is going to move forward, we'll have to bond again if, okay.
That's, that's correct. And, and the procedure was that the council did their intent to reimburse for the full $30 million. And so that process, as the projects are ready to go, we would bring it to the Finance Committee for the recommendation to issue the bond for whatever project is being authorized, and would not have to go through that process again.
Okay. Further questions? Mr. Butterfield?
Well, this is one I wanted to bring up as additional. Maybe Mary can answer this one. Is there any way that we could make two fields to 240, you know, by shrinking up the center portion of that?
The athletic fields?
No, out here at the
Softball.
The softball fields, the ones that are at 220.
I, I can answer that. When I talked to the architect after the work session, the most that we can probably gain is five to 10 feet. If we shrunk the backstops to get closer to the concession stand, from where we're at in that project, about 230 is probably the max that we're going to be able to gain on, on those fields. It's
Is that for all four, or could they just do two and try to get two of them at 240?
The way that I took it from the architect, that we should be able to get it at least for two fields.
At 230?
Yep. And some of that can help with that if we go with the, instead of an eight-foot fence, you know, if we go to a 10-foot fence, so you have to have a better hit to get it out of the park. It's just that that land area is pretty tight because there is a sidewalk there as well. On, on, I'm getting blanked on the
Civic Center Drive.
Civic Center Drive, yep.
Mary, you might know this one, then. How would that work for, you know, the 12, 13-year-olds with the 10-foot fence at the 230? Would that be feasible for the baseball associations?
I can answer that one, too. I talked to Mark Owens, who's a president of the Baseball Association, and asked him about the field distance. The 220 is kind of a, is a little short for that fifth-grade group, if you want to say, for 11U. Is it doable? Yeah, probably more chance for home runs and everything. So I'm going to say it's probably going to be more of that 10, 8U, and then below for like Kinderball and T-ball, but it's going to satisfy all the softball needs that we need, have, from 10U, 12U, 14, 16, 18, and even up to the college. If you go by the college field, that field is only 210 all the way around. So when you get to that sixth-grade level, you probably want that field probably at that 260 mark and above, and that's kind of what we have at Swanson and at Sunrise. I know that they've had kind of conversations with the high school AD, too, about making that skin field behind the high school more into a playable baseball field. They just have a hard time with that because they use that outfield for soccer. So that's why we put up portable fences out there.
Dr. Ammon.
Thank you. Counselor Butterfield, if I could help with that discussion, too, with the field side. If you recall, when we, where we put the two turf fields, we're losing three softball fields or three youth baseball fields. So I think taking that parcel of land to the south of the Civic Center and then just using, making two baseball fields out of it, two intermediate baseball fields, we are actually losing fields that, that we're replacing with the turf fields. And I think that would probably go against our agreement with the school district because that's where the, the school district plays softball. And if I can go back a little further, when we first met with community groups back in the fall of 2017, we had all the different booster groups involved in town, and there wasn't really a need for intermediate-sized fields. We have enough intermediate-sized fields. Now, they may need sprucing up and upkeep, but we really have a need for better drainage for those fields, and then also the recreational fields, and then field space for park and rec.
Okay. One thing that I'm concerned with, when I came back last week or week and a half ago, I was told all four fields were 210 feet. Now, tonight, Mr. Butterfield said, oh, two could be 240. And in here, it says 220. So I have no objection having two softball fields at 210, and they would be the elite fields for girls fast pitch. But the other ones need to be longer for youth baseball because with the bats that they have now, the balls just carry. The fields that they use now by the school, there is no outfield fence. They put them up, and they put them at the depth that they need, and it's usually like 250 or 260, and the fifth graders are hitting home runs there. It's, it's great having home run, home runs hit by those kids, but you got to make fields that you really want. You don't want them too small either. So, I mean, if you can get them farther than 220, that would be awesome. So.
I'll check in on that for you.
Mr. Baumgart sent out an email. I forget what day it was, but I thought addressing how some of these, the uses of the fields would change with the, with, with the change of those fields. So I'm, I'm a little confused with why we're trying to make the fields longer. If, if I understood correctly in your email, you said there were enough fields that would be used other places. Can you please just review your email to us with the information that you shared?
Mayor Pro Tem, member of the council, I sent out the email this afternoon when we talked on the 29th about some of the questions that you had about the 220-foot length and then the intermediate size. We got to kind of look at, when we play softball and baseball at the third and fourth grade level, we need a smaller field. So that's going to be our Gesh Park, Miller, Garfield. But with some of the requirements that we're getting from our traveling association, they need to have fences, like permanent fences. They don't really like to care to have the portable fences or that red fence that comes around. So their fields are going to be on Swanson and Gesh, Sunrise, and out at the high school. But we also have to work with our softball program to make sure that all the games are played. And typically, all of our softball is played on the high school fields. And we've also been able to do some of our field games at Swanson so we can have double headers, so we can have the lights. So we've been able to make it work with the fields that we have. You know, we do give the traveling association the fenced-in fields, and our rec programs go to more of like the Miller and Garfield fields. Does that answer your question? I think we have, once we can get these four fields out at the Civic Center location, we're going to be able to play our third and fourth grade baseball and all of our softball there. And so it's going to free up some of the auxiliary fields in town.
Can I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
The fields, as they're being designed, are they equal to the current fields that the school has? Are they equal to the lengths of the current fields that the school has for softball?
They're going to be just a titch longer. The main softball field at the high school is, is a short field because of the road that's there. I think it's, it's actually like a 190 down the line. So this is going to add a little distance to the varsity softball fields.
So we will be meeting the needs or exceeding what they have now?
Yes.
And we will be able to utilize the field And we will be able to utilize the fields for our needs also at that length?
Yes, for our younger level baseball.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Ahmman?
If I may, Mayor Protem. In additional response to your question, don't forget that these outfield fences at the new fields are going to be 10 feet. They're not going to be four foot. So that kind of adds, makes the fields play longer than they actually are. So that, that should decrease home runs as well.
Depends if the wind is blowing or not.
Correct, but it's Minnesota and
All right, any other questions? Mr. Hoffer, come to the
Did I read that right, as far as stormwater would not be a separate from the Invest in Wimmer Committee structure?
No, it's in there if we have a project that we want to work on.
But it says the project is separate from the Invest in Wimmer Committee structure?
Seven million dollars.
Wasn't that part of the proposal that was voted on by the citizens?
I, yes, I think, I, I, I'll let Mr. Gramm speak to it. It's just that it doesn't go through the Invest in Wimmer Committee because most of that is handled through Public Works.
Okay. It's still be funded by the
As the years go by, as projects come up in association with other street projects or parts of the community, the project would be designed for stormwater remediation.
Sure.
But the funding would come from the local option sales tax as we accumulate it. Any money left over not used to pay the debt for these other projects, that's, that's in our savings account. And then when these projects come up, we would use that local option sales tax to pay those projects. So some projects may take to year 13.
Sure, understand.
Where, whereas these other construction projects are anticipated, the best option would have been done in year one.
Sure.
Build everything. But stormwater was a long-term approach, and it's, in essence, we have a committee at the city council level that is, you know, includes the city engineer. So as, as the projects come up, they'll put them on the, the capital improvement plan and say, so much for streets, and we're proposing to use 400,000 of sales tax to do the stormwater part.
Okay.
Yep.
Just the way it was worded, it led me to believe that it was getting wiped out.
No.
No. You answered my question, well, thank you.
Councilmember O'Brien is the representative on that group, and city engineer Christensen's on it. Mel Odens, the county engineer, is on it as a private citizen. So it's a separate group, but they do meet quite often, so.
Mr. O'Brien has a question.
Councilmember Oss.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, I mean, clearly a lot of work has gone into all of this, and it's obviously something that we're at right now is not the project that maybe we totally envisioned as we started for all of these different, different projects. But I'm just, I'm deeply grateful for the staff and, and all of you here today and all the committees that you represent. You spent a lot of time getting us to where we are right now. Construction costs have gone up. That's obviously something beyond anyone in this room, our control, but y'all have dealt really well with the curveballs that have been thrown at you, if I can use that bad pun. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for your hard work.
All right, I see Councilmember O'Brien had his hand up.
I was going to ask the same question that Paul asked. I didn't quite understand what the comment was about stormwater. I am on that, I'm with that group. And so that's why my hand was up, because I thought you said two of these are just going to blow it off, kind of, I thought that was the comment. But I'm glad for the description of exactly how this all works, so thank you.
All right, so just an opinion, it wasn't a question? Okay. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just to follow up on that, with regards to Public Works and, and stormwater, and talking to our city engineer over the last, well, years, there is a long-term comprehensive plan for stormwater projects and, and stormwater management, and they're going to take that plan incrementally, but it is spaced out a number of years because they're, they include different facets. And then there's also opportunities for funding mechanisms that, there are year-to-year changes through MPCA and EPA, grant opportunities, funding opportunities, DNR opportunities also exist. So as the years go on, more opportunities to actually pool our money with other federal, state, and, and other funds will arise. So it's, it is part of a longer, more comprehensive plan that isn't necessarily, we're not honing in on it right now as one specific project. It's going to be spread out over a duration of time.
Good point. Any other questions? So Mr. Baumgart, what are you looking for? This is just discussion only?
Yeah, it was just for you guys to review the process, kind of an overview of the whole project and have the chairs here. If you guys have questions regarding their project, you can ask the chairs on how the subcommittee came up with their decision and their project.
All right, thank you. Mary, do you have anything you want to say? Swanson Field will get done this summer? Okay, next year?
I'm hoping.
Councilmember Oss.
I had a question, just, and I know we went out for bids for the event center, and the rec fields, where are we at in that process? Just an update.
We have a, actually, our brief bid meeting tomorrow at the Civic Center to talk about the project and the contractors have any questions. So we probably got about another week before that we receive bids back on that.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Otherwise, we'll take it for information only. All right. Number 13, consideration of support for application?
Isn't this where I had that one other one on the agenda added to it?
Oh, okay. What would you like to say?
Well, I would like the direct staff to reach out to Baker and Lang on the city sales tax. It seems like we're deviating from how it was written up, how it was marketed, how this is, if we deviate from it too much, how, how it's going to affect the city of Wimmer moving forward, if the state would pull it or not. I think those two would be able to answer the questions very well, and also
Point of order, Mayor Protem, point of order, is this being made as a motion?
Well, I
I'm just asking the question.
I'm just asking a question if we, we should be doing this.
So you want to bring Representative Baker and Senator Lang here?
Here, so we can hear it firsthand, because I've been getting a lot of phone calls that nothing's going as it was put out, marketed to go, go through. If we build this $10 million rec center, we don't have a sheet of ice in there, there's going to be a group of people that's going to be mad that there's no ice out there. The city marketed it for this. Somebody raises some concerns to the state, is the state going to pull our sales tax because we're not deviating from it? The best person to answer this would be have Baker and Lang in here to see if we're being on the right, because there's going to be some people that are mad if we don't have $7 million for the stormwater too. So we, we need to make sure we're doing everything right on this.
Well, it is a 13-year project, and we don't have to do everything in the first three years, so.
Yeah, but then if we have a shortfall on it, then the city going to have to step up and pay for the rest of it.
No, I don't believe so.
No.
Administrator Grammets?
Yeah, Mayor Protem, fair to land, city council members. The legislation, quite honestly, used very simple terms, recreation fields. They didn't go into depth and say you had to have six-inch stripes on your football field, and you had to have a soccer lines, and you had to have a dome, and that's what was sold. I, I agree with you on that, that that was part of the promotion. But the legislation itself is, is just what it says, event center. And it does not go into the description of what the event center is. Now, you can probably ask everybody here, and you'd all come up with a different idea of what a rec event center would be. The committee has gone through that process and prioritized and said, we don't have enough money for everything, and so here's what we want to fund first. And maybe by year 12, maybe there's enough money to finish out the rest of the project. But right now, we, we need, you know, actually, $23 million, you take the stormwater projects out, you need $23 million to do everything. And we don't have that revenue coming in. We would need $3 million a year, and as noted, we're getting 2.1. There's no responsibility on the city to make up the difference so that we build everything. And quite honestly, the, all the, all the four major committees have found out that if you built everything, we would need more than 23, we would probably need $33 million because the dome cost and the, and the hockey, you know, the arena, come at additional budget cost. So I guess what I'm trying to say is the legislation isn't specific. That's left up to the community to decide what to include, what not to include. And unfortunately, our sales revenue is lower than expected, and unfortunately, our costs have gone up dramatically for different aspects of the projects, you know, like red steel is, is, is sky-high right now. And there's a concern on our construction manager about getting into the market so we can at least get the steel prices at today's rate rather than two months from now. So we have increasing costs, we've got reduced revenue, we've got vague legislation, letting the community decide what to do and what not to do. And I don't believe that there's a responsibility for the general taxpayers to make up the difference, to make sure everything gets constructed. I think we all can agree that if you don't have the sales tax money, we can't do everything we wanted to do, number one. I know the recreation fields would love to have that dome, but it's coming in too costly to, to do the dome. You know, there's, they've spent their $6 million, and they don't have $8 million, or they don't have $9 million. So it's just the world we live in. And, you know, you can ask the city attorney if he wants to weigh in, because we, we addressed these questions early on with, with each committee, because they said, what if we can't finance a, a part of our project that we promised the community? And you, you can't finance what you don't have the revenue for. And, and that's the simple answer. But if you want the, the legal guidance of the city attorney, I'm sure Mr. Scott would be willing to repeat what he told us probably a year ago on what, you know, what you have to do and what, what you have to follow, and, and we can go from there. So hopefully that gives you, you know, some of the discussion we've had, you know, a year ago to try and get to where we are today. And, and I think every committee has recognized that there's going to be some unhappy people in each one of these areas because we didn't get to do everything we wanted to do. And that's, that's just a recognition of where we are.
All right, thank you. I see Councilmember O'Brien had his name up, and then I'll call on Attorney Scott, so. Michael?
Yes, I, I agree with Councilman Butterfield. I have also been contacted, actually, five of the two we're talking about. And I don't think it would have hurt at all to invite them to a council meeting and just make sure we have our eyes dotted and peace crossed. If that's what they want us to, to do, I think we should invite them.
All right, thank you. Attorney Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Just, I would endorse the explanation provided by City Administrator Grammets. And the way I explain it or think of it is the special legislation that the legislature passed really did just two or three things. First, it authorized the city to impose a tax. It authorized the city to collect the tax through the state, and then it provided the city legal authority to spend that money. And it set some limits on how much could be spent on each project, subject to a little wiggle room. But it did not impose obligations on the city to construct any specific project or to any specific specifications. It really just granted the city permission to collect the money and then spend the money on a project consistent with the description that's contained, as City Administrator Grammets noted in a very general description in the law. I, I, you know, offer that for the council's benefit not to weigh in on whether or not you should invite your legislators to address the council with any concerns they may have or to answer questions the council may have. But from a purely legal matter, applying the special legislation, City Administrator Grammets's explanation was correct.
All right, thank you. I personally have no problems inviting them, but usually they come in and talk to us after the session is over, and that'll be hopefully in, in May sometime. But Councilmember Nelson?
Two questions. I've been notified that, are we accepting calls that somebody's getting a busy signal? So is it possible, is there a possibility that the public is, should be able to be calling in right now?
The, the public hearing was the only reason for the call in. Once the public hearing was over with, that ended the access by outside telephone calls.
So there isn't access to do that right now?
Right.
Okay. The other question I had is, we passed a resolution, I, I was going to ask Robert Scott this question. Did we not pass a resolution on the local option sales tax? That kind of is our legal requirements for that with the ballot, or am I not remembering that correctly?
Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Councilmember Nelson. The city absolutely did pass a resolution that's part of the process in even being able to go to the legislature for authorization, was the city had to identify what projects it was seeking to fund through the local option sales tax. And the city did that, and that is consistent then with the funding that was approved in the special legislation, or the project, I should say, that was approved in the special legislation. But again, that, you know, I understand the, you know, practical reality of having designated those projects and designated the components of those projects from a legal perspective. The special legislation just defines in a broad sense what projects may be funded through the taxes collected by the tax that approved. It does not say that the city must spend that money on any specific project or to any specific definition of what that project is, as long as it's consistent with the general description. Obviously, the city can't take the money that it collects through the tax that was approved to fund these specific projects and then fund something else entirely. You are limited to those projects. But that does not mean legally the city has committed, or is required under the special legislation to spend that money or to build the, any of those projects to a specific standard.
All right, thank you.
It, it might be helpful if the staff could just send that out to the council so the new council members could review that, to have that understanding.
The ordinance or?
Yeah.
The resolution.
All right. Because it has some restrictions, I think, in there that, with that, so.
Mr. Grammets, you can do that?
Yep, I will do that, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Oss.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As I said at the last city council meeting, there's, and Mr. Grammets referred to it as well, but there's going to be people unhappy in every segment of these projects. I'm, I'm looking at Mary Swatzky and thinking about the ideas that got sold to the baseball community, and they had visions of a, a beautiful winged stadium with concession stand, with bathrooms, and what they were going to be able to do with two fields and all of the fields. And basically, they're down to what they could do with orange, and their stadium became a rectangle. It does not have the wings, it does not have the berms and some of the, the amenities that they had hoped for on that project. When it's going to come down to what we're going to be able to fund with the 21 or 22 million dollars that we may project, have, collect, 23, we're still anywhere from 7 to 9 million short. So 7 to 9 million of some projects are not going to get done. And so we're going And so we're gonna get phone calls from people who are not going to be happy, because if it's the event center that doesn't get funded, it's the tennis players and the pickleball players and the basketball players and people that would be able to utilize the event center. If it's the hockey outdoor stadium and the locker rooms that don't get funded, we're gonna hear from the hockey association. We already know we can't do the bubble. That is just not gonna be feasible. It just is not fiscally, we're not able to do it. And that's the reality. And so, yes, we're going to get phone calls. Yes, at some point, we are gonna have to make some really hard decisions. But let's turn it around. We are still going to have some wonderful projects that are going to get done, that are going to be added to the community. And it's, and we are still gonna end up with what we didn't have three years ago, or what we don't have now, because it's still in the process. So it's still going to be a success. We maybe had pie-in-the-sky ideas, but they're still gonna be great additions to this community and to the taxpayers.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Mr. Hoffer?
Is that over there?
Yes, you do. I'll call on you one more time.
Well, I think the absolute reality is that I'm not a citizen of the City of Wilmer, so I don't think I voted on this. But was it itemized out in your rec center? Sheet of ice, this, 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 this? Was a sheet of ice on there? Does anybody know?
Yeah. It was a covered.
In what the people of Wilmer voted on? Or did you just say rec center?
No, I think the flyer said a covered ice.
It covered many different things, and a sheet of ice was one of them. And now you're talking maybe for going to sheet of ice because of cost. I understand that perfectly. But the reality is of it, this went to a vote of the citizens. And they're assuming they're getting these things with that money. So to change it, I don't think, probably not even legal. Citizens voted on this. That resolution you passed here at a city council, that same resolution went down to the state. And that's what they filed with the state. The Senator Lang carried for you and got this done for you. So everything that's on that is down there at the state. If it says sheet of ice, I believe you have to make the sheet of ice.
No, it isn't on the ballot for the sheet of ice. It was on their brochure.
Okay.
It wasn't on the ballot for a sheet of ice.
Okay. Do you have it on the resolution? You must have a copy of the resolution you filed with the state. I know you gave your senator one, and he carried it with him.
Yeah, I'm sure it's what the ballot said, so.
Okay. But those things weren't on, was it proposed to the citizens?
It was in the flyer from the Invest in Wilmer.
Yeah.
It wasn't on the ballot.
Okay. But it led people to believe they were getting a sheet of ice.
Oh, we can still have an outdoor sheet of ice at the Civic Center. It just won't be covered.
Right, okay. But I'm just saying, I think it's a fine line on some of these issues if you're gonna try to drop them or change them up on something the citizens of the City of Wilmer voted on. And I'd be in concurrence with Mr. Butterfield to have your representative speak to you.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Are we done with this issue? All right. Councilmember Oss.
Can I clarify that this was just a conversation that we're having, that no action is being taken?
Yes, there's no action. It's for information only.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
All right. The next one is consideration of support for application to the border-to-border broadband development grant program. And I see Connie Schmall from the EDC. I think she's still on here, but, Mr. Grammets, are you taking this?
Yeah, Mayor Protem, Fagerly, and city council members. This information that you have before you to support broadband is submitted to my office. And Connie Schmall is present to describe why it's necessary. And I'm sure she's gonna do a fantastic job. So Connie, if you would, here's your opportunity to tell us about broadband tonight.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Protem, City Administrator. I'm Connie Schmall. I work with the Economic Development Commission as their Business Development Manager, and I've been facilitating a broadband deployment committee for the past five years. It's taken a long time to actually pull a project together. We've had some trials and some failures in the past. We've had some deployment by existing companies to highly populated areas. It seems they're always leaving gaps behind. And it's those rural area gaps that are the focus of our broadband efforts. Currently, we're working on a project for four townships close to Wilmer. That would be St. John's Township, Dolary, Mamory, and Arktender Township. The provider that's working with us to bring fiber broadband to those areas is Federated. Federated has done the counties to the west of us, Swift County, Locoparrel County, Big Stone County. They have a good reputation, they've done good work. They're cooperative, which means they're willing to invest in the people without expecting a fast and immediate return on investment, but rather, at least a 10-year return on investment. It's the only way to get good fiber out in the rural areas. What we do have to have in order to get that project funded, it's a $6 million project, is a grant from the State of Minnesota Border-to-Border Grant Process. There's a lot of points that go into getting a competitive grant drawn up and funded. One of those is to show community support. We don't need that support just from those people who will get the broadband, but we need it from businesses and cities and healthcare and everyone else that serves those areas. And every letter of support is to our benefit in making a competitive grant. So I would love it if the City of Wilmer would say, yes, we support broadband anywhere in Kansas County. It is a benefit to the City of Wilmer. It's a benefit to our economy, to our healthcare, to our schools. So I want to thank you tonight for even taking this into consideration, and I hope you'll pass it.
All right, thank you for being here. And sorry it was so late that you had to wait, but.
That's all right.
All right. So we need a motion to show support for application to the border-to-border broadband?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second further discussion? So do we have a resolution written up? Or is it the letter?
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet, okay. All right. Can we have roll call then?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Oss.
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien? Oss?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That passes. Good luck then, Connie. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yep. All right. Number 14, community pride. I have no announcements, but I'll ask each one if you have anything to say. Councilmember Oss?
I'll pass.
All right. Councilmember Butterfield?
I'll pass.
All right. Councilmember O'Brien?
This is a while back, but I tried to get it two meetings ago. The public service did an amazing job. We had a flooded storm, stormwater situation out here in front of my house. We had a freezing temperature coming in. We had basically an ice rink that's gonna form in an intersection. And Gary Manzer in the spirit of after-hours came within 10 minutes and cleared it out, thawed it out, and the line was frozen. So I just give a shout out to those guys. This was an amazing job they did.
They always do a good job, so thank you for that. Councilmember Oss?
Yeah, I just want to give a shout out to both high school basketball teams, boys and girls, both had good seasons and won playoff game before their season came to an unfortunate early end. But it was fun to watch them this year.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Plowman?
I'll pass, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
I just saw today, and I don't know the details of it, that Bethesda received a nice statewide recognition for their nursing home. So I think that that's a nice accomplishment for them, and just wanted to comment on that one.
Well, congratulations to them. And I will pass. So council committee meetings, Public Works?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Public Works, Public Safety will meet this Thursday, April 8th, 4:30 p.m.
4:30 this Thursday. Finance?
Finance is meeting this Thursday, also at 5:45.
5:45, Finance. Community Development will be Monday at, is it 5:00 or 5:15? It's Monday. And Labor?
5:45, I think we have it set up. 5:30 or 5:45, I think.
Right after Community Development?
No.
No? You're on a different night.
No, I'm on Community Development, but I think that one's at 5:30.
Okay, 5:30. Who's doing Labor? Mr. O'Brien, are you vice chair?
Next Tuesday will be meeting.
Next Tuesday?
Correct.
What time?
It'll be about 5:15.
5:15, all right.
And these are all still Zoom?
Or? Yeah, virtual.
Are they all virtual? Yeah, I guess so. All right. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you.